We have, it's been a couple of years since we've done a surplus equipment sale. And this is excess equipment that's gone as it broke down beyond our repair and maintenance. Something that basically just worn out. And in case of the cars, they've been, all the valuable parts been taken off of, and so they're just actually there to be exposed to us. That's what we have here. I have taken a minimal bid price and kind of put in range of what basically salvaged was going on in that neighborhood. So that's where we start our minimum bids at. So if we not give any bids on this, then that's our next step, obviously, to salvage.
I'm with that City of Windsboro. A draft resolution number eleven twelve oh one.
Second bid. And second. That's the City of Windsboro will advertise. All in favor, say aye. Bobby Odom. Airport runway rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I was asked to come tonight just to be here available for questions for you guys, and to give you our current status of the airport rehab projects we got. I guess you guys passed a resolution at the November meeting to award that project. It was second we were doing that project, we obtained an official notice from the low bidder, he's protested the contract. And we reviewed it with the legal counsel, and he's got that valid point. And really what it boils down to is based on the Supreme Court ruling of Hampton Construction versus City of New Orleans, we were asking that we re-advertize that project, that all three bids be thrown out, and had to be re-advertized again. For all of which had minor technicalities in it, but based on that rule, it doesn't allow you guys to accept that with you. So what we, I think Roxanne and I have on here is to, I think she's got a resolution to rescind the previous award, and then a resolution to re-advertize that project. So we don't take any questions, the council.
I guess I do. We're visiting this thing for, I think, the third time.
Yes, sir.
And it's a little disheartening, it made me a little embarrassing. I don't even know what payment rejuvenator is, but it sounds like it's pretty important. Haven't we missed that with that low bidder who obviously offered that, and his information provided, and the second guy didn't? Haven't we missed that?
Well, what happened was, none of the three bidders, let me back up. There is, and this is a new specification for the FAA, this payment rejuvenator process, and there is one line in that thing that says, "The contractor shall submit an evidence package with his bid submitted." And I missed that. I mean, our group missed that, and the reason is that is extremely unusual for the FAA's technical specifications to discuss anything about what you shall or shall not submit as a bid. They, in eleven years, I've never seen another specification that has anything to do with what you shall or shall submit. I read over, to be honest with you, when I read over the first three times, I read it as the submittal, not necessarily the bid submittal, and I took that to mean a shop drawing, that you would typically submit after your award of the job. What they've asked for in this specification is very unique to the FAA, and instead of being a very strict technical specification that says, "You shall do this, this, and this," this one is very open, and it says, "We don't care what material you use, as long as it meets these criteria for performance." So you can, you, the contractor can submit any material you want, but you submit this evidence package with it that is supposed to be within with your bid to prove that it has all these, meets all these criteria. That is extremely unusual. I mean, to be honest with you, I've never seen that prior to this submittal. And when we read it, I just, to be honest with you, it was me that I didn't catch it on this one. Had I caught that, then we would have been, still been at this process, and we would have, at that time, thrown out all three bids, because none of the three contractors submitted the paperwork. And he knows he didn't, and he called out the fact that he didn't submit it, but what he's doing is trying to get at it one more time.
Okay. So I misread what he said. He didn't submit that item?
No.
Okay.
No, nobody submitted it.
Okay. The people submitted the low shot.
And just for the council, I personally work with all three of these contractors, and I think they're from, one's from around Baton Rouge, the other one's out of Jackson, Mississippi, and the third one's out of New Jersey. All three of these guys are reputable contractors. Every, all three of them have worked with me on these jobs, so, you know, I know we've kind of gone back and around about this, at no point were we trying to isolate one or the other.
If, if that low bidder had not objected, or brought this to our attention, and we didn't have this bid, the rejuvenator, I can't pronounce, the payment rejuvenator, none of them had that in their, in their contract, right?
Right.
In their bid. What happens when the project starts going, and then, and the federal government requires?
Well, the first thing we would have done was a shop drawing. He wouldn't have been allowed to put anything on the ground until he provided us a shop drawing with that material. We would have gone through the same process, the issue would have been a timing process, and that's just.
If we accept that bid without it, then he's got to put, he's got to go through that procedure after the fact, after we accepted his bid. Who's going to pay for that? Because options don't cost more money.
It would have been his responsibility to provide any material that met that specification, all on him, at the price he submitted in his bid.
So if he submitted his bid, that process wasn't included in it? Comes to the point where you got to make that process, that process has to be done, it shall be done, and he said, gee, that thing's going to cost fifty thousand dollars. He takes that burden upon himself, or your company, or does this seem?
It would have fallen squarely on the contractor, one hundred percent. He would have been responsible for, because nothing he did would have gotten him out of providing a material that met that specification. And that's what, he was tied to that specification. And if for some reason he refused to do it, then we would have also been bonded companies. Yes, sir.
How many of you tried, have y'all ever done like this?
This payment rejuvenator?
Right.
Probably fifteen or twenty. This is the-
And there been a problem for?
This is the first one with that new specification. For years, and I mean, for as long as I've been in aviation, the FAA used Engineering Brief seventy-seven as their payment rejuvenator. And they came out with this one about, about a year and a half ago, and this is the first project I've done under that new specification. Which is something that's been losing me deep for the FAA. They, for years, did not change their specs, and they've decided in the last five years that they are constantly updating them now.
Is this more like a fill-in?
It is, it's kind of, the idea behind it is to go into the top half inch of the asphalt and rejuvenate the asphalt properties, and just, and just kind of revive it, basically. Kind of like, imagine putting water on dry dirt, and just kind of, you know, restoring that, you know, the properties of that dirt, and, you know, and painting it, and then you repaint the whole thing. It helps lock in the loose aggregate, and that kind of stuff.
Bobby, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The number one bidder mentions that there was some minor fractures that were, yes, overlooked, whatever, or not, you know, not, they didn't worry, you didn't worry about, and imagine that all three of them probably had some items that were, that probably had some concern. But according to your letter, you accepted the bid of the second in the bid pool of contractors, which in turn was twenty-three thousand dollars more than the lowest bidder. Now, if all three of these then made basically the same mistake, why was the second bidder accepted, and not the first?
The originally, in the original review of the proposals, the low bidder had two minor irregularities in his proposal. We capped his mobilization, allowed his mobilization to charge you guys at five percent, and he's told three different times in the bid process, do not exceed that five percent. He's also told in proposals to submit the entire contract back to me, to not submit to me, just tear out the page that he wants to sign and turn back over to me, but to submit me the entire book back. Those are the two irregular, irregularities that the low bidder was originally thrown out for. The second low bidder completed all the documents with the exception of the evidence package that we didn't realize all three of them did not submit. The third low bidder was actually thrown out as a non-responsive bid as well, because he made the same two errors that the first low bidder did. Now, I was the first to admit, these are very, very minor irregularities. I have many clients that will overlook those, but as our interpretation of the Louisiana State law, I don't believe that the latest Supreme Court ruling, what we discussed with Tab, was, I don't believe the current Supreme Court rulings will let you guys overlook those. And I have two clients that do not, two counties that I work with, that they would have taken the same stand you do, and they've thrown them out without even any hesitation.
So in doing so, then those irregularities actually would cost the city in addition to twenty-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
And just because, now, you mentioned earlier that all three of you, all three of these contractors were reputable.
Yes.
From the standpoint of the work and the experience that you had with them?
Yes.
Are you saying then that the cause of these irregularities, that you could not have him to correct them, and at the same time save the city, or look out for the best interests of the city by saving the twenty-three thousand?
Well, that's what we've been, I'm not allowed to go post-bid and have a contractor alter his bid. I'm not allowed by law to do that. All I can do at that time is deem his bid as responsive or non-responsive at that point. And that is kind of why we're at this point now, is, is, at that time, in my, at that time, I thought I had one bid of him at all criteria. So I don't have a right to throw him out just because he's twenty-three thousand dollars higher than the second guy.
Then who did you contact on behalf of the city as far as this decision?
To-
Who did you contact? Now, after you found these irregularities in the first, in those two, and it came down to the twenty-three thousand dollar difference with the second bidder, did you contact anybody in this city, or any governing body here in Windsboro, to say what type of problems you were running into?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We sent a grant recommendation letter to the mayor and the city council, the city attorney.
Then it wouldn't give you any permission then to proceed?
Yes, sir.
And who was that?
The mayor and city attorney. Based on the city attorney's review of the law, that he agreed that that's the way we need to proceed.
Are you-
Mr. John, the way-
Just a minute, Mr. Tab. Are you aware of the fact that this additional twenty-three thousand dollars is also an occurring of debt by the city? And in doing so, then that has to be an approval by the council? Therefore, the council too should have been contacted for an additional meeting, so that we could make this decision, in order to give the mayor permission to give you permission to accept this?
No, sir.
Mr. Tab, the citizen?
Yeah, what I was going to say, Mr. John, when Bobby told the mayor and myself that it was non-responsive, that's an engineer's call. You kind of call, you know, when your engineer tells you, "These are non-responsive bids," you know, that's his area of expertise.
Okay, and that's fine.
And, and, and that's why the mayor and I recommended the council, along with the engineer, that lowest bid should be rejected. It's, you know, it's not done all the time. Our position is, you take the lowest bid unless it's non-responsive. In this case, the engineer said it was non-responsive, and I had no reason to disagree with the engineer. Several times in the last twenty, thirty years, Meyer, Meyer LaFroy, and Hickson, and other engineers have said, "This bid is non-responsive, and you need to reject it." And that's what we did. But as a result of it, the lowest bidder pointed out to Bobby that not only was his bid non-responsive, but the other two. Am I correct?
Yes.
And again, that's an engineer's call. It's not a city attorney's or the mayor's call.
But wouldn't it be, wouldn't he be looking out for the best interest of the city?
Oh, sure he is. He, you know, certainly he's looking out for the lowest possible bid for the town. That's the law. You should look out for that. And it, you know, if at all possible, you should accept the lowest bid. Unless it's non-responsive.
And in this case, all of them were.
Yeah, in this case, what Bobby tells is, all three of them are non-responsive.
Bobby, that wasn't pointed out, that was pointed out to you by that, by that contractor? And had he not pointed it out, then you have proceeded with the, with the second contract?
Yes.
Then for, that would have been an irregularity on your part.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's not acceptable, man.
Yes, sir.
With that, then that's something that would be, you know, you're putting us past that's causing us.
Well, but there are certain time limits in which you can object, and I would assume this gentleman objected, and pointed these reasons out.
Well, I object to any loose spending of money, especially the town's money, when we are not, when all we are-
Well, and that's why you should always seek the lowest bid, as the purpose of it. You know, unless your engineers point out, you know, taking a bid very lengthy terms, and they go through it and check it, and if it's not responsive, it'd be like, you know, you're asking for a four-wheel drive vehicle, you're bidding it out, and someone puts a two-wheel vehicle, and that's a non-responsive bid. And, you know, I'm trying to make it simple, this is not simple.
Yeah, I know, but from the standpoint, it's simple, the simplest way for me to understand it is, is that we're paying twenty-three thousand, he would have paid twenty-three thousand dollars.
We'd pay twenty-three thousand more than the lowest-
More than the lowest bid. All because of, is that a lack of concern? Or is that just a lack of, or just a mistake? I hope it would be the latter.
Yes, I mean, I stand here with hat in hand and apologize for making the error, but unfortunately, my lack of recognizing that error doesn't change the fact that I would have thrown all bids out, and we're going right back to rebid the project again.
Now, that's what I like to hear, that's what I'm trying, I hope that's the reason.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, and if you guys, what I'm getting here is doing is, I can't control my contractor's act and things that are being-
Bobby, are these the same three contractors that bid the first time?
Yes.
Can you meet with them, like a pre-bid, and be sure that everything is in order?
We have those meetings, we have pre-bid meetings for all these, and none of these three contractors attended these three meetings.
Well, they need to, this is our third time.
We, they do that, put out resumes, I'm supposed to, all three of the contractors per se on the telephone, and they all, they all bid work for me prior to, and know the same rules, and with the exception of the new one and the new FAA specification, I have no excuse for why these contractors do it. They preach that, and we can show you evidence and plain respect, but we need to meet them over the head about what they're supposed to do with these things, clearly called out in section of the specification, when you do this thing.
The council says we should always take the lowest bid.
Right.
Unless it is a non-responsive bid.
Right.
Mr. John, I may, one more quick thing about that, is because we had concern about the low bidder in the pocket, we did work with the FAA and the LADOTD, and we have secured a grant from the FAA and the LADOTD in the amount of the second low bidder. So what we were able to do with them, and told them that to meet their grant schedule, said, "We got major concerns about this, and we're not sure how this is going to pan out legally." So what they allowed us to do was submit the grant application, I think you guys approved it a couple of meetings ago, for this, and it's that the second low bidder. So you've got cash in hand, hundred percent funds in hand, waiting for this project to start. Now, I know that's, and we all will be good stewards of everybody's taxpayer's dollar, and I had all kinds of downplays, the twenty-three thousand dollar difference in this. But just so you guys know, there is money already secured through the FAA and the LADOTD at the, you know, one hundred thousand dollar, the second guy's, the bid price, and it'll cost a certain project.
Bobby, is any reason a bid should go up? I'm not saying between the three, should it be within our money?
No, I mean, it's-
This bid?
Yeah, we have no problem with that. Both of these bids have been pretty consistent with, you know, the low bidders on the job. And I mean, I've talked personally with the low bidder, and I know his real issue with it wasn't, he went on out, he told me he had gone out on his own ahead of town, and ordered the materials for the project to lock in a cost, so that was his big concern. He already had material coming and sitting there, which is why he's really fighting for this job that much, because he's got material in the office to do it. That's what he's making, he's pointing out, going through exercise.
That's not a normal procedure, though, is it?
I'm sorry?
That's not a normal procedure, is it?
What was that, for him to order that?
Yeah.
Before he even ordered the bid? No, he knew he wasn't, and I told him he couldn't have done that when he got it, but practically we're going to go up, and he locked in the price. He took it upon himself.
I'd like to make a motion. The which?
You got a question?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution number eleven dash twelve oh two, the bid approval as non-responsive, and then this, of course, will be in conjunction with resolution number of eleven dash eleven oh two. Is that correct?
True.
That's the motion.
Second.
On a favor, say aye.
Aye.
The director reflects that unanimously approved.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
We've been in this position before. You and I have talked before. You know, the old saying, it's three times when you're out.
Yes.
I don't know about the rest of the council, I don't know about the mayor, but this is a very particular situation that we're in here. I'm not saying that reputation is extinct, but I am saying that for us to go back and lick the scap over as many times as we have, as we have, is unusual. As, if we're going to continue with this particular procedure, then we should not experience any of these type, or this type of mistakes in the future. If we're going to continue with the award of this bid, you know, this bid process, I'm going to make a motion. On this particular project only. But if any other mistakes occur on this particular project, then I'll be the first one to make a motion in reference to completing, completely getting rid of or not using your services. Do you understand?
Yes, sir.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that resolution number eleven dash twelve oh three, advise, advertise for bids on airport runway rehabilitation project. I'd like to make that motion at this time.
I will second this motion and echo his concerns.
Yes, sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The director reflects that unanimously approved.
Change.
The mid speaker, anyone else who would speak and ask questions? We, I'll let the mayor test our view. Some time ago, we introduced an ordinance to have the mobile home that would be brought into the city at a limit of eight years, eight years old. If they were eight years, over eight years old, then we wouldn't accept it. And it's been the experience of the superintendent, as he looks at these mobile homes and these houses on wheels, that he found that some of them, that are ten years old, were just as good or even better than the eight-year-old mobile home. Therefore, as in our conversation, we have determined that by upping this limit to an additional, an additional two years, to ten years old, would not affect the, you know, the ordinance or the property as far as mobile homes being put in, where houses have been torn down on smaller lots, fifty by a hundred and fifty, which we know homes or houses would not be built on, and probably some of the lending institutions would not accept this as an adequate space for building. So at this time, we're asking that the limitation of eight years be moved to ten years, allowing mobile homes to be brought into the city.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make that a motion.
Go up a second.
Say.
And properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. The director reflects that unanimously approved. Do we have anyone present that would like to bring anything before the council?
Hi, Mr. Count, my name is Hillary Scott. I'm owner of Three One Eight Production, small company, a small business here in Wind boro, Louisiana. I'm here today to discuss a matter of, of some signs that I did for the town, for the police department, the city hall, and also the fire department. These signs were did this year, and the last, the last bid to sign was did this month, about two weeks ago. I submitted in the invoice for the completion of the sign, which I was, which is asking to give you all the information, and we, all of you council can look over each bid of information that I have here.
Think they have copies.
Do you have, everybody has copies?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. The original invoice that I, the invoice that I sent, that sent in for the last sign was six thousand five ninety-five, which I was paid. I was paid three thousand forty-five, three thousand, three thousand forty-five dollars on invoice. What I'm here to counsel to ask, that I can, ask for being paid the amazing amount that I was owed on the sign that I did. The sign was actually, was approved by the mayor to be done this month and finished, and that's when I turned the invoice in, and I just wanted the council to go over and look at this and make a decision on this. You have any questions, you can ask me now.
How much difference are you looking in, Hillary?
It's thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five hundred and fifty dollars.
Now, according to, according to what we have here, we show that some payments had been made.
Yeah, actually, like I said, the payment that you made on it is thirty, three thousand and forty-five, three thousand forty-five.
Now, that's a police department, that's a police department sign, and the installation, and then you have the treated wood, and a hanging sign, or road sign, is that right? That's what that, that's what that comes to, three thousand forty-five dollars?
That was, that's the one sign on the invoice, one of the signs that I was paid for, but actually there's, in the building hole, there are actually four signs in all in the building, but you see on the invoice, there's only one signed invoice on that, on that invoice that I, that I turned, that I turned in. But I had to turn that invoice in based on a stipulation to get any of my money, because the original invoice I turned in was six thousand five ninety-five, what I turned in. But when I went to receive those funded, I was told that there wasn't no funding there. So at that point, I was told that I was going to have to accept the three thousand and forty-five, and that was the only way I was going to get any of my money. So I was under a, it was kind of like a strong hotel- So I was under, uh, it was kind of like a stronghold tactic that I had to take that in order to get my money, any, any of my money that was remaining on.
So you're saying that you paid for this, you paid for this stuff at first? You paid for it?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, everything that did, I did, I would serve it first, and then I just turned it in for us to get the remaining balance of what I was owed.
And you could have paid in full three thousand forty-five?
I was paid, but I wasn't actually paid in full, because, like I said, I had to, it, it stipulated on that, that I, that I had to put on that paid in full just to get the remaining amount of my money. Because, see, I, I, 'cause I, 'cause I, 'cause I couldn't get my money based on the remaining amount that I turned in. So when I came to get that, I was told the only way I would get any of my money from the job that I had did, I had to, I had to take the thirty-five, I mean, the thirty, three thousand and forty-five. But that was only for one of the signs that's, that's on the building. But if you look at the diagram, that... If y'all look at this, these are the diagrams you're acting on, playing on the building. This one, two, all we, all we signed, we did, these two plus that, but on the building invoice that I got paid on, I only got one of the signs. But I had to do that basically, that I was told that I had to do that in order to get any of my money. So, but I'm coming here to, to y'all, to ask y'all to, so I can get the remaining on, because, uh, the mayor's office said that the money wasn't there. And they said they couldn't give me the money because it wasn't there. But I was instructed by the, to finish those signs that were bid, which all the signs on it that were bid. I was just like, this ain't even on the invoice, I can be booked. Well, this sign is on the invoice. But, but that, but that sign there is not actually, uh, was not even reached an agreement. None of this was, in any, any, any workable agreement. It was just something added in. So when you get on the job, you start doing something you asked me. Okay, this leaves you down, running this company, I was like, I asked the mayor, I said, uh, this is gonna be down to the more, we get this stuff priced, and we didn't go back to it, we should have actually did. Got it to me more, so I turned it in, boy, he said the money wasn't there, so what?